Okay, so I'm gonna call to order the special meeting of the town and Antucket zoning board of appeals. Thursday, November, I mean, December fifteenth at eight twenty-two. So the first item that we're gonna discuss is application eighteen dash twenty-one act smart as applicant for twenty-one Woodbine LLC. Rick Bodett is presenting. Rick, will you remind me of, just because I don't have that paper from last, I thought I did, but the one that says who voted previously on this one?
I, I think it's, it's you, Michael, Mark, Jim, and Lisa was the original board.
Ed, Ed would really like you guys to wait because he is trying to get in.
Okay.
He had to, I had to hang up with him because he was, couldn't call while he was on the phone, so.
Okay. All right, before we get into discussing though, there's nothing, there's nothing new submitted. Everyone has the materials from the last the, the meeting we had. Was that last week, last Thursday?
Yeah.
I don't know that I submitted anything even for last Thursday. I sent a couple of as-built surveys to Nikki last night. And an aerial. Just in case the board wants to share a screen, but you know, not, not really any new information other than what I'm gonna tell you, and I think what the the neighbors want to say probably.
Okay. Nikki, are you seeing Ed at all?
Not yet.
So I, I think we can wait maybe a few more minutes, but then I think we need to get going because I know everyone, I think, you know, a couple of people on here need to, are leaving today to get to Boston, and I, I know we had said when we started this that we were gonna not be, you know, need to be timely.
Okay. I'll, I'll text him.
Lisa, one thing that helped me out was I reset my password, so maybe.
He, you know, I think he doesn't, I don't know that he has a password.
I didn't know I had one either, so.
I think I see him here, hold on.
Oh, good.
There we go.
Okay, good.
Ed, can you hear us?
He's muted.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, good. Okay, so so Rick. Okay, so Rick, I'll let you have the floor first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, first of all, thanks for everyone getting together on short notice to do this. Obviously, I know it hasn't been easy, given the holidays and everything, but anyway, I don't know, Madam Chair, if I really need to rehash everything. I think everybody's pretty well-versed in what happened. But I think, you know, the, the high points are that my client Act Solar put the solar array in the setback here. Found out on another property that the town had changed their position relative to the solar arrays and came in on this application. Asking for a variance to have these solar arrays up to five feet in the setback, ten-foot setback. I think it was Lisa at the first hearing asked us to go get HTC approval because I think the the neighbors had informed us that the HTC asked us not to put it in the setback. So in the intervening time, we went to the HTC, we got HTC approval to have them where they are today on the condition that it's, that it's screened. So we've, you know, we sent that to you before the last hearing. Excuse me. And, you know, as I've said before, I think we've, we've kind of gone over and over about the hardship to Act Solar. In the event they have to move these, and they've also changed their policies as well as I had said in the past, so this won't happen again. They've specifically changed obviously their policy on the basis of what the town is telling them now. And have changed actual applications that they had pending, so this doesn't happen, so. In, in the intervening time, since we spoke last, I think a week ago, my clients have met with the neighbors. And and are willing to make a number of things a condition of, of an approval if the board is so inclined. And obviously, you know, let, I think the neighbors are on here, it looks like, so that, I don't want to speak for them, but I'll give you our position on what the neighbors are asking for and whether we can meet those requests. It sounds to me as though the neighbors would prefer a mix of Leland and Red Cedar. Instead of Privet, which I think we're happy to do. That it would be installed by a cer, a date certain, you know, by the spring. I don't know, maybe May or whatever, you know, the board thinks necessary, as long as it's within the growing season, we're fine with that being a condition. That we maintain both sides of of the Lelands, so the neighbors don't have to maintain them. And I think it sounds like the, the neighbors would prefer the height of these, this screening to be ten feet, and that's the one thing that, that we can agree to because that significantly affects the efficacy of, of the solar panels. So, you know, for, for a lot of reasons, we can't do that. The HTC approved us at, at five feet. So we'd like to keep it there. I did talk to my client, and it sounds like they can go to six, almost, almost up to seven before it really starts to affect the efficacy of, of the panels, but after that, it's, it's, it's a significant change in efficiency, so. So anyway, that's, I think that's where they fell on that. And like I said before, I think, you know, these guys tried to do everything right and kind of got caught in a pickle with the town, and it's unfortunate, but this is how they're trying to deal with it, so. Again, they're happy to screen it, so it's not seen. And I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Okay, thank you, Rick. I was hoping to hear, let's see, from one of the neighbors.
Sure, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to go, Madam Chair, Tom Palmer for fourteen peak watt.
Thank you.
You know, just to be clear, our first preference is for remediation. I mean, you know, remediation with screening is, is for our clear number one preference. That said, we did take to, we, we, we took to heart the sentiment the board expressed back in November, when you did an informal poll of a sense of the board, and so, you know, we find ourselves potentially having to deal with screening as an alternative. Our big concern with screening is, is there enough room? Quite, you know, you can look at the pictures and you can look at the, you know, where the arrays are relative to the property line and the fencing and this, and the ground that you see there is basically the property line, so you can see there's just not a lot of room for screening. But be that as it may, we'll, we'll take whatever, you know, the most effective screening that we can get. And the reason we asked for the ten-feet screening, a ten-foot how tall screening is because both of our houses at sixteen and fourteen peak watt are upside-down houses. And the arrays, as I understand it, are as tall as five feet, so even at, you know, five-foot screening, you're gonna see them and, and clearly the taller the screening, the better it is for the neighbors so that we don't have to see the array. And that's, that's all I could say at this point.
Okay, Mr. Palmer, I'm just curious, and I, it's probably in the packet, and if we've discussed this before, I apologize, but how close are the, are you, is your house to this property?
Well, our, our property lines are but.
But I mean, your, the structures, like how, how far?
Oh, the structure is probably it's, it's probably on one of the, the pieces, and they're probably forty yards to the south. But all that vegetation that you see, that's screening us from the array is on fourteen peak watt property, and likewise with sixteen peak watt, but I'll let Christine speak for herself. And we've thought about doing, you know, developing the northern part of the property, which is why we're, you know, why we're very concerned about this, because to the extent we do anything with that northern part of the property, all that screening is much more reliant upon what we do.
Okay. Christine, did you want to have anything to add to that? I think you're unmuted.
Yeah, sorry. I really, Tom pretty much covered everything that, of all of our thoughts. You know, again, as I've said multiple times, all, everything with screening currently is either on his property, my property, and, you know, we feel like we could be, you know, limits the use of our property if we need to maintain our own screening to screen their array. We were just up there, it's very, it's really visible from fourteen peak watt right now. I mean, it's just, you can see the entire array. We were there the, the weekend before last. And, yeah, so we're just, you know, we're just concerned that it'd be adequate, adequate, you know, screening, since it seems like it's not gonna be remedied at all in terms of getting out of the setback. We just, you know, and I'm not opposed to solar, I'm just, you know, it's just, I just feel like the neighbors sort of are having to deal with the whole array while it's very well screened from the homeowner's property.
From the twenty-four. As far as the, what Attorney Bodett was talking about with the height, understanding that you guys are looking for the ten feet, but that seems to, what he's saying diminishes the, the efficacy of the panels, and the HTC approved at five.
With the HTC meeting was that, I'm a little, I haven't, I'm not really very Zoom savvy, and I was unable to speak on the HTC meeting, and the documents I submitted weren't put in front of any of the HTC members, so I feel like a little shorted on the HTC side. I couldn't figure out how to, I think, raise my hand in Zoom. And I did try to chat on the side, and somebody said they could see my comments, but nobody replied to them, so. You know, so I feel like we were, I was at a disadvantage on the HTC meeting. But anyway, in terms of the height of the plants, when we did, we did go out there with Tim because we were there, you know, two weekends ago, and even right now, as the sun is pretty low, there are a couple tall trees that don't really provide screening from the ground level of the array at all, but there was like one tall tree off to the side, and it really wasn't casting that much of a shadow on the lower arrays. So I understand that it would diminish the solar the efficacy by some degree, but I don't know that, you know, in the summer, it sort of goes right over the, the top, so. You know, I don't, I just, I prefer it to be taller, but, you know, at this point, it is what it is. I don't, I don't know.
Okay. And so um, does, do the board members, does anyone have a question for either Rick or the neighbors, or do we want to talk about? Well, let's go with that first. Does anyone have any questions for Rick or the neighbors? Okay, so then. Sure, sorry, Jim.
Sorry. Just have one question. Can you confirm the height of those arrays? Is it five feet?
I, I think that's what they said last hearing, but I think Tim, I, I don't want to say the wrong thing, so I think he's, I think they said it was five feet.
Correct, five feet.
Susan, Ed request texted me, said he needs.
Me too, I was just, yeah, I'm just texting him back saying I'm, I don't have the power to do that, but I was gonna ask Nikki, can you, Ed's asking if he can be unmuted, he doesn't. So he, he can't.
He can't.
He can't unmute, and I don't.
He can press star six.
Okay.
Star six, did you get?
Star.
Susan, when you have a second, I, I'd like to ask a question. I can't put my hand up for some reason.
That's okay. Michael, go ahead. Yep, we can hear you.
I guess this question's for Rick. Are all the plannings proposed to be on the, the applicant's property?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks. Yes, they are. I mean, that, you know, that, you know, to, to Christine's point, you know, we're, we don't want them to bear the burden of the screening, the neighbors, if they so desire, they can treat their property like scorched earth. That's the point of our screening, is it should be on our property, and obviously it's not gonna do the neighbors a lot of good if we don't maintain that screening, so I think it's important, if the board is so inclined, to have a condition that we maintain both sides of, of that screen.
And that would include making sure that they stay alive the first year, they require plenty of water.
Yeah, I think that's fair enough. I mean, if, if the landscaper feels it's necessary, I don't know for Lelands if you want to water them too much, I don't know how that works, but if, obviously, there's irrigation there, so there's no reason to not hook that into, you know, a drip tube or whatever needs to be done.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add at this point, or do we want to talk about, oh, Jim?
Sorry, Susan, without getting into the real technical side of the solar arrays, can you just explain to me, you know, you talked about the seven foot, possibly going to seven foot. Can the Act Smart rep explain to us why, and I appreciate the neighbors being amenable to this, I, you know, my, my goal would be to make the screening as high as possible. And, you know, seven foot, the magic, magical height. Can we go to ten, is I guess my point.
Yeah, I think Tim should definitely answer that because he's modeling on it.
So, so this is Tim Carruthers, I run operations for Act Smart. We, we did, we, we, when we design our solar systems, we run it through a fairly sophisticated design and modeling tool. It's an industry standard tool. And we, it, it models, it, it, it does a three hundred and sixty-five day simulation of solar production based on the array, based on its pitch, its orientation, and surrounding structures and trees. So we added all of that screening into the model, and we modeled it five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten feet. And as we cross that six-foot threshold, the annual production starts to diminish. When we cross the seven-foot threshold, it starts to substantially go down. And when we get up to ten feet, there, the entire array is losing over ten percent of its annual production. So it is, it's once a seven feet really start, we, we start to see a, a big loss in, in energy production.
So it's between zero and ten percent loss, you're saying?
Yes. Yeah.
And I have one question about the vegetation. The Lelands sometimes get to be very tall, you know, like they don't have, hold a lot of vegetation at the bottom. Sometimes, I think it seems like they get eaten a lot. Is there any concern about seeing through at sort of eye level? Because I did go out there, I actually, I'm sorry, I trespassed on, I think, sixteen, and kind of climbed through the brush to kind of look at it firsthand. And, you know, you can definitely see it through the scrub that's there now. You know, this time of year, so I was just curious about whether or not keeping, making sure that there's vegetation low. I didn't know if it made sense to incorporate some sort of a low fence or something that sort of, that was more solid to keep. To make sure that the understory is heavy enough to provide screening.
I, I'd like to echo that in that we did talk about this with Act Solar. There is currently a chicken wire fence there, if you want to call it that, I'm not sure what the technical term is. My understanding is that may have to be removed for the vegetation, I'm not so sure. But also, that is an active deer path. We get deer all the time that come down that path that's in the southeast corner of the solar array. So having deer resistance or deer mitigation, whatever you want to call it, something to prevent that from happening is something we talked about and that we're, we're particularly concerned with as well.
Okay, so we can.
Okay. And then I have, just one other question for Tim. When you guys ran, did you run the model prior to putting the solar panels in, I assume?
Yes.
And what did you run the vegetation height at, at that time?
So we, we took a look at all of them, big trees that are to the south and to the east, and they were put into the model, so that those were already factored in there, you know, ranging from, you know, five to ten to fifteen feet. So all of those structures are in there. The additional modeling I did was just to add that dense, dense in, along the south at the five foot on the property line, and also along the east on the, on the property line. So, so we did factor in the existing vegetation.
Tim, but a question for you. When you, when you originally ran that model, that was on the original plan of the array, which had the arrays not within the setback, correct? I mean, as a result of the arrays being more in the setback and shifted south, that's gonna change that shade.
Well, it, that might be true, and, but I think, I, I don't want to open the discussion to go back to that. I think that we need to stick moving forward where we have the model, the, the model that we have. And the screening that we are, that was in existence or is in existence now. And I guess what, so when you're talking about the model that you did, the, the energy production that you're talking about, that, the, I guess, one hundred percent production capacity factors in those tall trees that are already in existence there.
That's correct.
Right.
And then I think you said that the efficacy, if you went to ten-foot screening, would go down between zero and ten percent, so at worst case, you'd be at ninety percent production. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, do we want to, do we want to talk about the conditions that are? Yes, definitely.
Great. My first question is, am I, am I gonna be, am I gonna be voting? Full member, and I did, I did read in.
Well, I don't think so because we already, we have, I mean, Nikki, correct me if I'm wrong with procedure, but we have prior votes from me, Michael, Mark, Lisa, and Jim, so that board would continue to vote, right? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. If, if Mark was unable to be here today, since he wasn't here when we scheduled this meeting, then you would vote, you mullen or read in or whatever, and you would vote in his place.
Right, so in essence, this is a waste of my time?
Well, I mean, that's, that's your call, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's not a waste of your time if you want to contribute, and if.
Well, I will contribute, but I, it, this, this whole thing irritates the heck out of me. And that, having said that, it's not your fault or anyone's fault, well, it is, but I'm not going to that. I don't think this is fair at all to burden the neighbors with a the, the array out of the setback larger than it was supposed to be. And, and using the two thousand and seventeen comment by Marcus is, is pulled out a pole clock. I mean, that had nothing to do with their application in late two thousand and twenty. I'm not sure when Paul, I wanted to ask Paul, when he became the building commissioner, but I believe it was before then. So I, I don't see that as germane at all.
Wrong.
So Ed, I get you, I under, I hear what you're saying, and we, we discussed this a lot in the prior meetings, and I think everyone on the call, including the applicant, the neighbors, I, even Rick has said, you know, I mean, that it's not, yeah, it's, in a perfect world, this situation would not have happened, and unfortunately, it did, and we are where we are, and we're just, I think, even the neighbors have said, you know, you know, we're trying to make the best solution for everyone, and unfortunately, this is one of those instances where I, I mean, depending on what the board votes, but it doesn't appear the way that this has gone in the discussion and where we are now, that, you know, everyone's, everyone is, including the building commissioner, you know, is, is bending a little bit to not get the exact result that they would want in a perfect world, but given what the circumstances are and what's, what's happened, it seems to me that everyone's willing to compromise a little bit to make it a little bit more palatable.
Well, that, frankly, that is not what I heard from the neighbors. I, I, I hear resignation by now that they're going to have to take this on the chin, and so they see the right, maybe what they consider the writing on the wall, and are trying to get the best deal they can, if you will, but that's only because they think the, or perceive that the ZBA is going to vote in, in one way that, that's sort of against their position, and I, so I understand their resignation, but I don't think it's fair. I still, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think this whole thing is fair at all. I think that the, the, the Act Smart submitted a plan. They then basically ignored the entire plan, put the thing wherever they wanted, and, and they're coming back and saying, well, in two, uh, two, uh, two, twenty seventeen, someone said that, oh, yeah, maybe this, that, or the other thing, but that is not what they applied for. They should have reapplied. So that the neighbors at that meeting had a chance to say, yes, no, maybe. And, and to shove this down their throat at this point is just totally unfair. In my opinion.
Yeah, I think, looking back, I think that, yeah, they should have reapplied, they should not have relied on that, but they did. And so the, the, the question that we, you know, we have a variance application before us, and they've talked about the hardship that it is to move this. Rick, I see you have your hand up, so I'll let you respond, and then, and then I'd like to talk about conditions, and then see, just because I know people are trying to get off island today.
So I'll try to keep it quick again, I, you know, I, I think it's almost like Ed wants to go backwards in this process, and we've been doing this a long time. All right.
I mean, you, you have, you have slowly but surely eroded the opposition, if you will, or beaten them down, and I don't think it's fair.
Ed.
Can I respond?
Let me just, I'm, I will, but I just want to say, Ed, in reality, I, I don't think that's true, because unfortunately, the, the board that has dragged their feet on that, the, the entity that has dragged their feet on this unfortunately has been our board. We've had to postpone because, and no offense, but Eric dropped off, and so these app, the applicant, the owners, the reason that we're all here today, instead of wrapping this up last week if we could have, or in November, is, is on us. So yes, there is some dog tiredness on this, but, but we contributed to that too, so I, I, I really, we need to take some responsibility for our board's behavior, and that we caused a, I don't know, eight-week, nine-week delay for these guys, and so, so I apologize to the neighbors and to the applicant for, for our caught having everyone come here today, but that doesn't change how we vote, and it doesn't change the situation, but I, I just don't think that it's all on the applicant for that, so, anyway, go ahead, Rick.
So I, I appreciate that, and the, and, you know, look, the only thing I would agree with Ed on is that this isn't fair. So I, I appreciate that and the, and you know, look, the only thing I would agree with Ed on is that this isn't fair. I mean, every single person I'm looking at on this screen right now goes to Marcus to ask, or Leslie or Paul, to ask advice on certain things. And we all, every single one of us rely on that to make decisions and advise our clients. And that's all Act Smart did. So when, when Paul changes the policy after he gets here, which by the way, was I think 18 or 19, it was after 17, then these guys kind of get caught in, in this spot that is unfortunate. I don't think it's right to say they shouldn't have relied on that. It's what we do, all of us. I do it every day. And so if I do it, why should these guys who are just business owners not be expected to rely on that advice? The fact is, you know, that's in the past. It's, it's, it happened. It's unfortunate. This wasn't intentional and they're trying to fix this. And, and obviously I think Ed is also right. To a certain extent, you know what? Isn't fair to the neighbors either. Okay. I mean, th- these things aren't supposed to be in the setback and they are. Okay. So at the end of the day, that's why we want to provide the screening. If we move this out of the setback, if we have to move this out of the setback, folks, let's remember we're under zero obligation to provide screening. So again, I'm not, you know, I'm not here for the neighbors, but it sounds like they've been pretty reasonable. They've had some good meetings with my client, even eroded opposition. You guys asked us to meet with the neighbors and that's all we've done. And then you asked us to go to the HCC and we did that. We've done everything we've been asked to do. And, you know, we, we, we're just trying to fix this problem. This is not fun for us in any respect. I said that last time. And, you know, if we could, it, it, look, it doesn't, it doesn't affect us in any way other than the efficacy of the system to put 10 foot Leland's up. They grow in half a year. So it's really, we're not trying to screw the neighbors by not putting 10 feet up there. We're, we're only trying to try to screen it as properly as we can to the, for the neighbors while keeping this an efficient system. That's it, guys. So, you know, I, I just resent the fact that something I'm.
About Rick.
What was that, Ed?
Can I ask Rick a question?
Sure. And yeah.
The, the only thing I don't understand, Rick, is that the reliance in the 2017 memo, when there was a new commissioner in place and this application, I think was in November 2020. So I don't see how the October 17th memo is, is germane frankly. And I don't, why wouldn't they go back? You say they kept going back to that memo and it said it was okay to put them wherever they want, basically, and yet they, why didn't they go back to the building commissioner and say, can we move these here?
I just think the better question is, why would they? If they reasonably believed that they could rely on Marcus, the zoning enforcement officer, why would they go back? I said this on the first hearing. So what, what happens? Like, were they going to keep going back every single time? I mean, that defeats the purpose of asking the first time. If they have to go back every time, then why, why get the advice the first time anyway? I mean, and then if, you know, what if Paul says something different, then they got to go to Leslie and say, hey, you want to break the tie? I mean, look, you know, it just, these things happen. That's why there's a zoning board of appeals, because people get caught in these things sometimes. It wasn't intentional. They're not trying to stick things in the setback and they've specifically changed their policy now so that they're not doing it anymore. So, you know,
I, I think.
It's reasonable for them to rely.
I, I also, I think that we've also, we, we've talked about that a lot in the past few meetings. And I think that we need to move on from that because there is, it is like, it is what it is. It happened and we are where we are. We can't undo the decision-making that happened. And I, I maybe Ed, I could see if Marcus had left and there was a new zoning enforcement officer, but Marcus, I mean, I, I agree with you. They should, and I said this in the first few meetings, they, they should have made different decisions. But we are where we are now. And so now this is the situation we are in. We asked them to go to the HCC. They did, and they got approval. And we did ask them to meet with the neighbors. So I'm glad that that happened and I'm glad that we have, I have a list of, it seems like six conditions that the neighbors would like, the, and the parties can agree to. The, the last two, Rick, I added after you listed what your understanding from the meeting was, was, you know, irrigation or drip tube or whatever sufficient watering needs to be done to maintain life for these trees. And then some deer mitigation that would be either, either what's in place now or something to mitigate from the, the deer eating.
Yeah. And I think, I think maybe Michael, maybe he, he can correct me if I'm wrong. I think he wanted to see something in there that, that ensures these things live a year at least.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, I think. Maintain them anyway, but, but, so I think maybe that's inherent in there, but if.
Right. But I think, I think we've said that before, like if they die with it, you know, like if they die in, in the first growing season or whatever, they'll, you'll replace them and.
I think some sort of a fence actually makes sense, some sort of a physical not transparent fence.
Well, we can't.
Put a fence on the property line.
Doesn't that?
There's, there's one already there. I mean, right.
I know. I don't like, I mean, that fence is, is visible. I mean, you can see right through it. I'm talking about.
Like a board fence, Lisa?
Yeah. And then vegetation on the inside of that up to 10 feet. If you're only losing 10% of efficacy, I feel like we should screen, give the neighbors as much screening as possible.
I, I agree with Lisa on that. You know, to me, that's a compromise. I don't know much about solar, but 10% loss is a good compromise on that.
Um, I think I would, I, I, I felt more comfortable with seven, like seven feet meeting.
No, I'm not, I'm not going to bend on that. I mean, I, I'm, I will not bend on that. It's got to be 10 feet. And I think there should be some sort of a fence because I think that vegetation below will get eaten and you'll see right through that from their property.
But, and I know we probably can't dictate the species of trees. But Lisa brings a good point up. You know, cedars are native and that's why they don't have those problems that Lisa mentions. But, you know, I don't know the adjoining property owners have a preference on that, on the type of tree.
No, and we talked about it only in the context that we're not landscape architects and, and arborists. So, you know, we'd defer to the people, we'd have to defer to some with better expertise.
I'm just, I'm just biased against anything non-native. That's me.
I see Christine, you have your hand up.
Yeah. I mean, I also, I mean, I know that the Leland Cypress grows very quickly, so that's, that's a plus. I don't know, I don't have them on Nantucket at my property, so I don't know how much the deer eat them. But I do know red cedars native. I don't know enough about how much it'll shield it or not, but I definitely would be, would like that. At currently, the array affects Tom, the carpenter's house more than our house. So, you know, I'm willing to defer to what he, he prefers. I also want to say thank you to Ed because I do think he really listened to our side. Yeah. So thank you, Ed. That's why I think a fence is a, a low fence that's, you know, four feet, that's red cedar is the way to do it. Because then you're not relying on vegetation. You can, you can then, you know, put in some vegetation to soften that and deal with the height issues since they have upside down houses. But, you know, there's no way to ensure that the vegetation is not going to be constantly eaten and that you're going to lose, you're going to not have that visibility through the brush this time of year.
Michael, do you have anything that you'd like to?
Yeah. Excuse me. I think that there's some good ideas. I'm not sure about having a fence next to a, you know, six or seven foot, 10 foot tree. As far as, you know, photosynthesis taking place in the bottom of the tree. But, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to go along with what the board wants to do here.
And does, does red cedar, do the deer eat the red cedar? I don't know the answer to that.
They'll, they'll gnaw on the, the trunk and they rub their, the males rub their antlers on the, the trunks. I don't think they eat it.
Um, Mark, do you have anything to add at this time?
I, I was thinking that the fence might be a more appropriate solution along that line so that they can still maintain some distance to be able to repair panels and do things like that. Leland Cypress trees grow fairly broad. And if the whole tree has to be on the premises, it's going to come right up against those solar panels at some point in time. And they, they can get lollipop by deer. But you can, you can avoid that by putting up a netting at some point. And obviously you can lop them off and they become more of a hedge than a tree. They're not pointed at the top anymore. And the best thing about that material is it, how fast it grows.
So, um, so what I'm hearing from the board is, so Lisa and Jim are hard, hard fast. Oh, Jeff, I'm sorry. Jeff, do you have anything to add at this point?
Uh, no, I don't. I'm just a spectator, interested spectator. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. So what I'm hearing from Lisa and Jim is 10 feet is a hard, anything less than that is a hard pass for you. Um, Mark and Michael, so you guys, you know, I'm hearing different things about the fence. I, I would think, I kind of agree with Mark. It seems like it would be either or to me. Um, I think you're putting a fence in there would, with the trees seems like a lot. I think a netting might be sufficient or, and if, I would think the neighbors, maybe they can speak to this would, if I'm trying to put myself in your shoes, I would probably prefer to have the screening versus a fence. I feel like the screening will be potentially higher and more dense and more natural than, than having a, a fence. I feel like a fence might, for me, for me personally, would add to bring more attention to the solar arrays. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, certainly for me, the fence wasn't an either or. I, I think the 10 foot, you're not going to get a 10 foot high fence. So.
No, no.
10 feet is crucial. And, you know, I'm just trying to prevent what I see happens to Leland Cypress's. And I just think it puts a lot on somebody to have to maintain these things because they do get eaten from below and they look like, you know, and who's, in three years, who's maintaining that? So I just want to make sure that the plan that is brought in with the vegetation is done by somebody who understands the deer issue and makes sure that that doesn't, you know, that it stays full below eye level.
So, and, and. Given the aversion, given the aversion to the Leland Cypress, why don't we just say red, you know, red cedar is what, what should go there?
It, it just wants to look natural, you know? I don't think one, one vegetation, one species is appropriate to just line the property line with. It wants to be natural.
So why don't we, why don't we, um, do, you know, how Jim likes to say, um, you know, indigenous plantings, right? And, um, it doesn't have to just be, so like, just not be Leland Cypress, be indigenous species to Nantucket.
Can I ask who's going to be doing the work, the, the planting?
I assume the, the owner's landscaper or whoever my client hires to put it in.
Right. Well, I just wondered if, if we should just, you know, maybe there's a way to just have a an exhibit that shows.
So like a planting, sorry. I was gonna say like a planting plan attached to the decision.
Yeah, we submitted what we had submitted to the HTC. It doesn't have cedars on it. But, um, I mean, we can probably mark, mark that up or, or, you know, Tim can get that back to you guys for attachment. I mean, I think, you know, in terms of it, of the Lelands either not surviving or being eaten by deer. I mean, I would expect if the board is so inclined, that it would be a condition, obviously, that we maintain them. And if they aren't maintained and, and, you know, you can say netting or whatever, that, you know, make sure, we have to make sure it's our client. It's our, it's the owner's responsibility to make sure they're not eaten by deer. And if, and you know, if it's not screened properly, then it's a violation and I would expect the neighbors to complain to Paul. I mean.
Okay. So, so do we want to put then, instead of Leland slash red cedar? Do we want to put indigenous plants consistent with landscape plan, the landscape plan attached to a decision in the event that we issue?
I, I, I don't think this packet has that HCC plan, or maybe it's in here. I just can't find it.
Um, I think it was.
Hold on, maybe it's at the front here.
I think it's page 72.
This?
Proposed screening.
That's.
30 Lelands on it.
Oh, that's it. It's a photo.
Yeah, evergreen screening, um, plantings on property line. And this, this is the one that says.
Straddling the property line or are they going to be fully on to, is the trunk going to be fully on to the property, your property?
I, I think it should be entirely on our property because, um, well, number one, I, I, I'm assuming Mr. Palmer's client or whoever it is he represents is not going to agree to us planting on their property. So I think it's fair for it to be on us, on our property. I mean.
Just to be clear, I'm not an attorney. I'm a son-in-law. So that actually, I think, puts me way down on the totem pole.
Okay. So.
So, um, okay. So just making that clarity. And then, yeah, I think we'd need a different plan to just show a more indigenous landscape.
Meaning not Lelands, Lisa? Is that what you mean?
No, I mean, you can, I could think there could be some in there. I just, what I don't want to see is a Leland hedge.
Right.
Don't think that that's native. And I think you want it to sort of blend into the vegetation that's already there and just look like it's always been there.
You know, there are other options as well. Hollies are native and look great and are evergreen.
Yeah. So would it make sense to say something like, you know, plan to be attached, obviously, but, you know, a mix of evergreen or, or, or Leland and indigenous species?
And we can rely on Jim to review because he knows a lot more about this than anybody. It sounds like.
I mean, I mean, I'm not a landscaper. I'm just a lover of the birds and the bees. So.
Yeah, there you go. Well, that helps.
Um, and there is, there is a like a pamphlet put out, I think by the town or somebody that has like, it's like indigenous. I don't know.
Yeah. Listen to Young wrote a book years ago about that indigenous plantings, but they're going to go in it, they're going to go in at 10 feet. Or are they going in a lower level to be grown to 10 feet?
I mean, I think that if we, to be perfectly honest, if the board is inclined to, for them to be 10 feet, we got to put them in at 10 feet. I mean, I don't, you know, the second I put them in the ground, they're in violation. That doesn't quite.
Okay.
So.
I'm just clarifying that.
10 feet. Yeah. I mean, you can specify that.
Okay.
Okay. So going, so in at 10 feet, um, deer mitigation, sufficient watering. The applicant will maintain both sides of the Lelands or, or of the vegetation. Um, Leland or red cedar, no privet, indigenous species to blend into the landscape with a plan.
Holly.
Holly.
Yeah. You might not want to specify, you might not want to specify plant material, just say indigenous plant.
Indigenous species. Okay. Um, okay. Um, okay, and installed by a date certain in the growing season, so what? I, I have, I don't have.
I have no idea.
Okay, let's.
No later than May.
Yeah. Okay, no later than May first, on or before May first?
I, I would say so.
Okay.
The, the, the growing season starts around there.
Okay, so on or before May first, mean, installed. On or before May first. Okay.
Okay, just one other thing. Is there any language, just saying that could be um, for the existence to be maintained for the, I guess, the same length of time as the array. Exists in there?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, so it looks like we have conditions. Would some, I think we're at the point where someone could make a motion.
Can you, yeah, can you just, just repeat them? I'm sorry.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay, so I have um, one uh. Screening indigenous, of indigenous species, um, installed on or before May first. Uh, of two, of twenty twenty-two. Um, the owner will maintain both sides of.
Who's in the minimum height of ten feet?
Yeah, no, I haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, it's, it's gonna be on a different.
Yeah. Maintain both, I just have a list of how it was discussed. Maintain, uh, owner to maintain both sides of the vegetation for the time the array remains on the property. Uh, the height of the, of the screening will be ten feet. And the um, the owner will provide adequate watering for those species. And um, maintain life for the first year. Um, well, I guess we don't need to say that because we're saying they're gonna maintain it for the whole time and then deer, uh, deer mitigation. For the, the screening. So that's what I have for, and all plantings will be on the owner's property. Does anyone have anything to add to those conditions from the board? Okay, so did someone want to make that motion?
I'll make it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Michael. Would someone second that motion?
Second it.
And Jim seconds. Okay, so I'll do a roll call vote then. Um, to approve the relief requested with the conditions that I read in. Uh, myself, I, Michael.
I.
Mark.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
And Jim.
Hi.
Okay, so that passes. Okay, thank you all and thank you to the neighbors for your time and I'm signing on this morning and all of your input. On this one.
Thank you to the board and enjoy the holidays, everybody.
You too. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to the next one, we have nineteen dash twenty-one. This one is act smart as applicant. For Timothy and Lauren Minor at twelve South Valley Road and Rick Bodett is presenting on this one as well.
Uh, we're, we're, we're gonna withdraw this one, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, so, uh, request has been made to withdraw this application. Can um, someone make a motion to uh, grant that request?
I will.
Okay, Lisa makes the motion and would someone second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, um. Is this, is the board the same on this one?
Uh, I think.
Uh, there was one different, I think.
Was, oh yeah, because didn't Jim?
Michael, Jeff and, and Mark. Jim wasn't on it.
Yes.
Okay, Jim, okay, so it's, sorry, say that again.
Susan, myself, Michael, Jeff and Mark.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, so, sorry, so the motion's been made and seconded. Um, so I'll do a roll call vote on this one. So myself, I, Mark.
I.
Lisa.
I.
Jeff.
I.
And who's my last one?
Um, Jeff, Mark, Michael.
Oh, Michael. Michael, the request has been made to withdraw this application and um, there's a motion and it's been seconded.
Which application's that?
This is the second one, nineteen twenty-one, act smart as applicant for um, the miners at twelve South Valley. Rick has asked to withdraw the application. So you are, I, you are the last vote to approve. Okay. Okay, so that application has been withdrawn, so that concludes the business that we have for today. Um, I appreciate everyone's time and attending the special meeting and I hope that you all have a wonderful holiday. We'll see you in January.
Thank you.
Okay, have a great day.